Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Minuteman School Committee Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and it is 6:30 PM. We're starting the meeting, calling it to order. We need a motion to adopt remote participation.
So moved.
Second?
There was a second, so we will proceed with a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague-Erlington, yes.
Matt, oops, Steve.
It's Linda's turn.
Linda Herbison-Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlene is- On, on time.
Big chat. Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Jeff is absent, and Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. So that is unanimous in favor of having a virtual meeting. The next thing is public comment. I have received none. Julia, any news?
It is correct, Alice.
Okay, so we will not have any public comment. We do have somebody coming to meet with us. Is that person, the auditor, present yet?
Yes.
Do you think, does the auditor wish to go ahead, move up in the agenda?
Whatever you guys like to do, that's fine with me.
If the school committee would allow it, we could take the audits report 8B out of order and have it now so that Ms. Campbell could go on about her business. Is there any objection to that? No, hearing none. We'll do that. So 8B is coming after public comment, and take it away.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tanya Campbell, and I am a Managing Director at C-Biz. I am responsible for overseeing the district's audit, and I'm here tonight to present the results of the fiscal year 2024 audit. A little information about me, since I'm new, a new face for you guys. I know you're used to seeing Scott McIntyre. I have worked with Scott for the past 20 years. A little scared when I did the math on that, but we worked together as Melanson, Markham, and now officially C-Biz, effective November 1st last year, and we're hoping that's our last name change that we have from here on out. I think we're, I think we're finally done, which is good. I work out of the Greenfield, Massachusetts office, and Scott has been working on transitioning some of his clients over the past few years. So while you did have the same audit team that performed the audit, I am now in responsible for overseeing the audit. My understanding is you were all provided with a summary of audit deliverables when you also received the reports. So I'm going to kind of follow along with that and use that as a basis for my talking points, but please feel free to stop me at any point in time if you have any questions or want to discuss something further. So in terms of the deliverables you receive at the conclusion of the audit, first and foremost and most importantly is the financial statements. Now, as part of the audit, we assist the district in the preparation of the financial statements, as we do for all of our clients. However, management is ultimately responsible for the financial statements themselves, and our responsibility lies in giving an opinion on those financial statements. So after we draft the reports, we send them over to Nikki, and she performs probably the most detailed review of a set of financial statements I have ever seen of any client we've ever worked with. You know, she's provided with the trial balances and adjusting entries so that she can compare the information she, financial information she provides to us and tie that to the financial statements, and we review everything and make any necessary changes prior to issuing the final reports. Something you should be aware of is if you look at the financial statements, they are clearly not a one-for-one with your general ledger. We are required to make adjusting entries in order to convert the, some of the information in your accounting records to how they should be presented in the financial statements. But please keep in mind that these are just standard adjusting entries. They're not correcting entries. We're not fixing things that are wrong, which is good, and I can, I always like to say that when I can, because I can't say that for every single audit that we do. So it's good. It means that the information that you're being provided with on a monthly basis to review and make decisions on is accurate. So something to keep in mind, and I definitely like to, to mention that when I can. That's always good to note. Excuse me. In fiscal year 2024, we issued the district an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which means that based on the results of our testing, we found that the district was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. In terms of some of the key numbers, I'm not going to, you know, go through all of them, and please keep in mind, these are almost a year old at this point. I can't believe it's already mid-June 2025, but the, something to, to point out is your unassigned fund balance in your general fund, which the general fund is obviously the main operating fund of the district, and the unassigned balance is essentially what's left over at the end of the day after you've set aside all your reserves that you're required to. And it's, if you want to think of it this way, it's the starting point for the district's free cash calculation, or E and D certification number, sorry. That was about $2.6 million at the end of 2024, which represents just over 8% of the district's annual operating budget. So that's a healthy balance. The district also had over $2.8 million in the building stabilization fund and just over $1.3 million in the OPEB trust fund. So also very healthy reserves that have been set aside there. That was all I was going to really touch on in the financial statements, unless anyone had any specific questions. So the other deliverables include the, what we call the single audit report. Because the district expends over $750,000 in federal funding, the district is required to have an audit in accordance with uniform guidance, which is the set of guidance that dictates how the federal grant audits should be performed. We're also required to perform our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, which means that we are required to test internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations that would have a material impact on the audit. Both of our reports noted no issues, so we did not find any issues related to your federal grant audit or any issues with internal controls or compliance. In fiscal year 24, we audited ARPA funds as a portion of the district's career technical initiative grants, the CTI grants, were funded with ARPA, so therefore they were required to be reported on your scheduled federal expenditures and audited. Does anyone have any questions on those reports? At the conclusion, oh, no, okay. At the conclusion of the audit, we provide the school committee with a governance letter, which basically summarizes some of the information I just talked about and makes you aware of, you know, whether there were any issues or any things that arose during the audit, and we did not cite any major concerns or highlight any issues in that letter. And last but not least, the end-of-year report. Every year, as you're sure you're aware, the district is required to submit the end-of-year report to the state of Massachusetts Department of Education, and they issue guidance in terms of what we're required to review and test related to that report to make sure that what is being submitted is accurate, because they do use that for a lot of decisions and information on their end. So we did perform agreed-upon procedures over that report as well and noted no findings or issues with that either. So all in all, a clean bill of health and no issues noted, which is, which is great. Does anyone have any questions or anything they would like to discuss?
I'm Acting Chair, and our Chair always, Jeff Stul, and if he were here, he's on vacation, always says, you know, he's not an auditor, and he's wondering if there's anything you would want to bring to our attention. It doesn't sound like it from what you've said, but I'm going to ask it on his behalf.
Nice. I love, there's always one person that asks the, asks the same question every year. No, we did not find any major issues or concerns that you should be aware of. As I mentioned, you know, the reserves and the balances are good. You know, the district is a pleasure to work with. Everyone on the staff is great to work with. You know, they're responsive and give us what we need in a timely fashion, which is great. And, you know, no, no issues noted in our, our testing, so that's-
Fabulous.
Yeah.
Steve, did you have any remarks? Steve, you're on mute. Sorry.
I think after six years, I would learn, right? No, Tanya made, made, presented the audit to the, to the Finance Committee. I don't exactly remember. It seems like a long time ago. I think it was in the fall, maybe. And Jeff did ask that question, by the way, at Finance Committee. So, no, we were, we were pleased with the report, and, and I think it's a real testament to, to our staff, as, as Tanya has mentioned.
Yep. I see no other hands up. So I want to thank you for coming to our meeting and doing the work with our great business department, and we're just so lucky to have you all. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And Nikki knows how to find me. If anyone does have any questions, definitely feel free to reach out. She can pass along my, my email contact information, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, Tanya.
All right. Bye, Nikki.
Okay, so now we're going to go back into our regular agenda, which starts with the consent agenda. We have approval of donations and approval of the draft minutes of May 13th. I do have some edits for the minutes. They're not, they're not a big deal. But let's start out with the, does anyone have any issues with the approval of donations? No? So let's take a vote on those, and then I'll bring the minutes up as a separate item. Can we get a motion to approve the donations?
To move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we can have a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague-Erlington, yes.
Linda Herbison-Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral-Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Thank you. The next item is the May 13th agenda, minutes, and I just have two things to change. In that section on the procurement requirements policy, which we're going to discuss later, anyway, the third major sentence starts, will start, there was a clarification of a key update in the policy. Ms. And, and Drod is officially registered with the Office of the Inspector General's Office. It is not the Attorney General's Office. And then in the third, the next sentence down below, I'm going to change the first sentence. Ms. DeLuca raised the point that these individuals, whoops, hang on a second, sorry. That per the policy, only upon approval of the Superintendent, the Chief Procurement Officer has the authority to delegate his or her procurement powers and duties to Sonya Vetrano, Assistant Business Manager, and Michelle Resendez, Director of Operations. Those are the two corrections that I would suggest for the minutes. Sharon?
So I was also questioning that paragraph, the one that says Mr. Drod was added that there was a revocation issued because of Kevin Mahoney was still listed as our Assistant Superintendent. My understanding was that that wasn't because he was still listed as Assistant Superintendent. It was because he was still listed as our Chief Procurement Officer. And then, as you said, that where it says that the records have been updated and delegated procurement authority to, I feel that that's a little misleading, that it's more so that delegates have been identified as, or that they have received the, I mean, Nikki, I don't remember exactly what the title was, but basically, didn't we have to identify who the delegates would be, but not that we've given them authority at the moment, but that they could be delegated to if necessary?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So Sharon, you would like to make those two changes?
Yes, I would, if possible.
Does anyone object to those changes? No? Okay, so with those changes, we could approve the draft minutes of May 13th, 2025, as amended.
Can I make one more just quick question that I'm not sure that it really matters, but I, I felt like the, on page three, where they were talking about the principal talking about the out-of-state travel, it was a little confused, and this is a little minor technical, but like just the whole idea of him, of Principal DeLeva requesting the approval to begin fundraising efforts to cover the cost of both trips, looks like it was to cover the cost of Skills USA and Educators Rising, but then what we voted for was actually to raise money for Educators Rising and the agricultural trip to Ireland, which is below that. I'm just wondering if maybe we should include all three trips below, or no, just a simple technical thing of moving that, because I was like, wait, both trips, we weren't fundraising for skills, we were fundraising for Ed Rising and the other one. So just a minor technical little thing, but I just wasn't sure about that.
So you just, you want to move the two below the sentence about fundraising efforts?
I want to move the agricultural trip above the sentence that says Principal DeLeva also requested approval for, I don't even, it's not even both trips. It's like the Ed Rising and Ireland trip.
Okay, all right.
I know it's a minor technical, but it's just, it felt like it wasn't explaining clearly what we were fundraising.
So can we just change that sentence, requested to begin fundraising efforts to help to cover the cost of the Ed Rising and Ireland trips and make the reader read on? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so that's, those are the, the corrections to the minutes, the amendments to the minutes. So can we get a motion to approve the draft minutes as amended for May 13?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second, so let's take a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah is next.
Sorry. Sarah Montague-Erlington, yes.
Linda Herbison-Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral-Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. The vote was unanimous in favor. Thank you. The next thing is the Acting Chair's report. So for the good of the organization, do we have any items for the good of the organization? Anybody going to take any special training coming up, Sarah?
I am taking collective bargaining training in July. Very excited. It's on the weekend.
Well, thank you. Anything else? Anybody else doing anything fun? Sharon?
Well, I know that a lot of us attended graduation, so I'll leave that for Mr. DeLeva later, but I just also had the opportunity to attend the award ceremony the night before, and boy, that is a well-oiled machine that the faculty have. It was a very long event, over two hours, but it was very, it was just great to see all the kids cheering each other on and the, the smoothness of that presentation. And there's a lot of really wonderful awards and scholarships that have a lot of deep, meaningful connections to Minuteman. That was great to see.
Thank you. Charlene?
Yes, this has actually nothing to do with me. It was actually a Facebook post, but it has something to do with one of our recent graduating seniors. His name is Tommy Ostroff from Lancaster. So I wanted to note, a woman on Facebook wanted to give a public thank you to this Minuteman senior, Tommy Ostroff, because she had a flat tire, and he went home and got his tools and came back and changed her tire for her. And I thought it was, first of all, my, my son's also mentioned that this kid is really very nice, but I thought it was an excellent way to, you know, show pride in yourself and as a member of the community, and it really made me as a school committee representative for Lancaster especially proud that a young Lancasterian from Minuteman would be so kind to do that for a stranger. So I just wanted to applaud him.
That is really nice. Round of applause for Mr. Ostroff. Okay, any other items? No? So next item is 5B. I see here, thank you, Steve Ledoux. So that is because Mr. Ledoux has been from, the representative from Concord for six years and incredibly has brought 40 years as a town administrator, that experience to the table, and it's unique in my experience to have someone who has that much knowledge coming to work with us, and it's just been terrific. But I want to invite you, Steve, to a in-person meeting. I know you're trying to get away, but could you come back one more time to July and just let us say thank you in person?
Yeah, sure. I told Jeff I'm actually leaving the next day to visit my colleague roommate, but that's fine, because, you know, we're only going to Wisconsin, not like I'm going Japan or something. So that's fine, but you know, I, I just want to say it's, it, the six years just went by so fast. It's just absolutely amazing. And, you know, I, I just think of back all the stuff, you know, when I started, the only people left from the board that I started with are Pam, Alice, and Jeff. We've had a lot of turnover on the board. And as one of the students said at graduation, one of the, one of the student speakers, had four superintendents, two principals, and I don't know what else, but you know, it's been a lot, and COVID, and COVID on top of it. So a lot of changes, a lot, a lot of things, but it's been a great experience. And, you know, I've, I've worked with, as Alice said, I've worked with a lot of boards over 40 years, and I think this board is really terrific. You know, we, we reached consensus on a lot of things, and we talk through things, and there's never, never any, any animosity or hard feelings. So I, you know, it's kudos to all of you and, and the staff as well. The staff's been terrific, and I'm going to miss you guys.
Well, we won't let you get away that easy. We'll see you in July.
Right. And I also wanted to introduce, my lower, my lower right of my screen, but Dee Ortner, who will be the new Concord rep, so.
Hello, Dee.
Welcome, Dee.
Yeah, we'll welcome you properly in July in person. We'll meet in person. We don't usually meet in person, but we will be in person for that meeting in July. So we'll see you then, and we'll see you again, Steve. Thank goodness.
All righty.
Okay, so next one is the reorganization of the school committee meeting. That is Tuesday, July 22nd. That is an in-person meeting. We vote for the new officers and so on and wrap up that kind of business. So the next one is the school committee meeting schedule, which we can have a vote on, to approve the 2025-2026 school committee meeting schedule as presented in your packet on page. I don't know what page it is, but you've seen it. So it's page, oh, page 18. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
There's, there's a second from Ms. Norris, so we can proceed. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague-Erlington, yes.
Linda Herbison-Bolton, yes.
I'm going to vote yes, but it's a little weird since I won't be here. But yeah, Steve will do Concord, yes.
Thank you.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral-Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we're going to approve to appoint a temporary member to the finance subcommittee, and it's my understanding of this is that for a couple of months, we need someone to review the warrants and sign warrants as a member of the finance subcommittee. Is that correct? It's just a couple of months of service from one of the members of the committee.
The Finance Committee does meet twice, twice a month as well.
Oh, so you could go to those, and it would be fun. You'd get to see Steve for at least a little bit.
I think one more meeting, I think.
Is there anybody who'd like to volunteer to do that for a couple of months? Probably really instructional and exciting information, all that finance stuff. Anybody with expertise in finance who's been hiding?
Is that, can I ask a question? Do you need to sign things in person?
No.
Electronic. It's all electronic.
Ooh.
Adobe.
Even better. Anybody want to join Stephen, Sarah? I feel like an auctioneer.
Jeff and Sarah.
Jeff and Sarah, sorry. Jeff and Sarah.
Oh, I'll do it.
Pam's volunteering. Thank you, Pam. Okay, so we get a vote to appoint Pam Norris temporarily to serve on the finance subcommittee. Can we get that motion?
So moved.
Whoa, 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 can we put in the motion through the end of June? Because that's what we're talking about, right?
No.
Usually the, the committee assignments are done in September, if I'm not mistaken.
It's through the end of August. Can you still do it, Pam?
It's all remote?
Yep.
Yep.
Pam, I can do it through the end of August, if that helps.
Yes, that would help a lot.
Okay, so we'll revise that motion to appoint Maggie Sharon to temporarily serve on the Finance Committee through the end of August.
So moved.
Second.
There was a motion by Steve, seconded by Pam, so we can have any discussion. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And we can take a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague-Erlington, yes.
Linda Herbison-Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral-Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Great. Thank you very much.
No problem. Can somebody just send me the dates of those meetings so that I get them in my calendar?
Yes, I'll send those to you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We're up to number six, the Principal's Leadership Report. Mr. DeLeva.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to pull up my report real quick. And everybody can see that. Before I move on to the graduation slide, and I only have one slide tonight, which is, means we're getting to the end of the school year. I want to also thank Sharon for bringing up Academic Awards Night, I think, and Scholarship Night. It was, it was a beautiful evening, and I just, again, hearing everybody that is connected to Minuteman and the donors that were there saying their piece of why they're donating to Minuteman was just a, a great night all around. So I appreciate that being mentioned. So for tonight's Leadership Report, and again, these are rough pictures. I literally took them as screenshots from the YouTube video that was there. So just to give you a little bit of a feel of the evening, there were so many pictures that we could have done, but note that on graduation, which was on 6/6, we had 175 seniors that graduated. That day, students arrived at Minuteman at 10:30 to do a practice within our gymnasium. Afterwards, we had a nice luncheon with those students, the staff that was volunteering in the Student Union, and then this is something new to me, which I think worked out wonderful, and I hope it still continues, that students were bussed from Minuteman to Lowell Memorial Auditorium. I will tell you from experiences of different graduations that I've been at MC for, that is not something that is typical. It makes the evening very easy, because you know, if you have somebody that's late, you've got to restructure them, you've got to put them in a certain line. Everybody was there. So that makes it so much easier that we can do all that stuff right at Minuteman and head over to them. Students and staff, when we got to the venue, again, we did another quick dry run. We all were able to prepare and, and, and make sure our robes were all set and everybody was good to go. I do want to personally thank Ms. Diane Dempsey, because she is the well-oiled machine, I mean, meaning that she's the engine that keeps it all going and running. And again, from my past experiences of emceeing, this was probably one of the best graduations that I've ever attended because of the organization, because of what has happened. You can see some of the pictures there as, you know, having our voices of Minuteman High doing the pledge and getting certain awards, to even our salutatorian Aviva playing the saxophone. That was definitely a first for me, but it was just a wonderful evening at the end. And if you look at the end there, our students throwing up their caps in the venue as well. So again, thank you to Diane Dempsey, but there's, I mean, Mr. Brian Tisley, So again, thank you to Diane Dempsey, but there's, I mean, Mr. Brian Tisley, Mrs. Coppethorn. I could go on and on, you know, Mr. McLeary and Courier for they get there early, Mr. Callahan gets the plants over there as well. So there's just a lot of people that take a piece of this graduation and make it work the way it is. So I have nothing more to say about it, just wonderful, great things. And I appreciate all school committee members that attended, those that couldn't, we understand, but really made for a great evening. So thank you, and I'll entertain any questions or thoughts or comments. Stop sharing.
You have to add Mr. Chirillo in there that you didn't have to say all those names.
Yeah, yes, yes. And if you remember from the awards night, that was a, that was a good start of practicing. But yes, Mr. Anthony Chirillo did a fabulous job saying everyone's name, going through getting their diplomas.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Toleva? Or comments about graduation?
Somehow I missed the backflip.
It was amazing.
I missed it too.
I did too. When was that?
Yeah.
Toward the end.
Think.
Right after.
He walked to the edge of the stage and backflipped off. It was.
Wow. He shook my hand and let go and backflipped off the stage, and I said, oh, my gosh, did he? He's, he was alive. It was okay. And it was very quick and didn't cause a scene, which was amazing.
I think Mrs. DeLuca said it best that she had a saxophone player of backflip when we talked after.
And a fufazela.
Yes, there you go. So you've been through many of them, and this was one that was very unique.
It was great. It was great vacation and every vacation. It was a great graduation, and it was really wonderful that it was the traditional Minuteman short graduation. Thank you, thank you. I think everybody likes that.
It was wonderful.
Thank you so much. To everyone. So next item here is the superintendent's leadership report, state regulations update.
Hey, so I want to thank Sarah Montague for setting up a meeting with our Arlington rep. I actually touched, we went to the State House yesterday. And he, I would say, gave us some pretty good education about where we can go to make an impact with the lottery conversation. I talked to, his name's Sean Garbali, and I spoke with him last night as well. We're in contact, and he's happy to support Minuteman and everything we do. Julia today gave me an updated list of all of our senators who are connected to Minuteman. And Mava's recommendation and my recommendation is that we personally contact senators. Because where the lottery issue stands right now, let me actually open up. Actually, I will share my screen. This is the, there's been so much information going out, it's kind of like trying to sip water from a fire hose. So even actually as Sarah and I sat waiting to meet with him on this bench, we had, what was it, a three or four-page additional sample letter that we could send out, and we're like, oh, my goodness, there's a lot. But there is this, if you, I know most of you follow this already, but there's a Massachusetts Voc-Tech Coalition webpage. And the action that we are asking senators to take is to support the House outside section sixty-five, page fifteen to sixteen. So right now, the House proposed that we establish a vocational admissions task force, which would in essence stop us from having to implement a lottery in September. And if you want to read that, you just click this here, and you can read that outside section. So what I'm going to do right now, just for ease, is I'm going to put a link to this page in the chat, so you can all have it. And I will have Julia follow up and email it to everyone. And I will share out, lost my little Zoom thing, I will share out the updated list of our senators, and even if it's a senator that is not connected to your particular town, we should be contacting all of them, because they are all connected to Minuteman and, you know, as a regional district. So I know we've been talking about this every single month all year. Does anyone have questions? Or maybe Sarah, do you want to add anything?
I would just say if we can get the communication out as soon as possible, because what we heard from Sean is that the it's, it's now with conference committee, but we're not exactly sure if they've officially started. We know who's in it. And we know that they have to be done sometime in July. So that doesn't, that leaves, you know, it's almost the middle of June already. So I would say once we get that information, if we could send it out to the senators, that would, that would be great. And Heidi, thank you for clarifying that specific ask that we should make. I think that's crystal clear.
No problem. So if you look in the chat, the link is there, and like I said, Julia will email that out right after the meeting. So I know in, actually, in Arlington and in some other finance committee meetings or town meetings, people asked about the lottery and what they can do. This would be the ask. Give them this link, follow this webpage, and ask to support that specific area outside the budget. Questions? Okay, well, that, that is it for our state updates, but I would like to preemptively thank our policy subcommittee, because we are going to have some very short-time work that has to get done. Not only with admissions, but also with our local graduation policy, to make sure we are aligning with the new state regulations. I just sent out a survey to staff, and Paul sent out a survey to students, parents, everyone regarding what they would like to see in our graduation policy. What do we see? What's our vision for it? So that by the time we get to meet in July, we'll have that information readily available for the school committee to hear from all types of stakeholders. Okay. And that is the end of my, my update for today. Oh, actually, one additional thing I'd like to sneak in. I would like to congratulate Paul on, as the principal, for getting to that graduation. He did a spectacular job as the emcee. He really did. And I as well have never seen such a efficient, not a single kid was late, people didn't behave badly. It was wonderful. And I was a little worried being offsite. Ooh, will it still feel like Minuteman? But all of you last year were so complimentary of this, and Diane Dempsey was one of the first people who I met with when I came here. And if you don't remember, I want to say it was September, maybe October, we did commit to five years to make sure we have the date at this location. So this is year one of five, so couldn't be happier, couldn't be happier, and congratulations, Paul.
Is that it, Superintendent Triscoll? Yes. Okay, we're going to the finance report from Steve Ladue.
Okay, first of all, we have our budget all approved by all the towns. Concord was the last on June sixth. And because eight other towns had already approved it, I talked to the moderator, and she put it on the consent calendar, which is a little weird to have a million, million, seven hundred thousand dollar consent item, but it passed with, passed with the breeze. So we, we're good to go for FY twenty-six. Finance Committee did meet on, I think, June eighth. And mainly, we went over the, the, the two issues that we were going to ask the, the full committee to vote on. But we also received an update on the, on the North Building, which my understanding, the, the board will get a full presentation on, on the status of the North Building at the July meeting. So the first issue I would like to bring to the board is to approve some end-of-the-year budget transfers for FY twenty-five. And I'll turn it over to Nikki to go through that.
Thank you, Steve. I'm just going to share my screen to show the details of the committee, but this is in your packet. As these two budget transfers at year-end are over ten thousand dollars between function codes, we will bring them to the school committee for consideration of a vote. As Steve mentioned, we have brought this to the finance committee. We have one item fixing our heat recovery unit in the advanced manufacturing shop. And we added a slew of detail underneath for anyone that's interested in the particulars of the air and the coils that are going. And Michelle Resendez is here to answer any questions on that. We are also requesting a transfer of funds to our textbooks line. And it's for textbooks and related curriculum related to health and other electives. And.
Oh, may, may I add one thing? And English language learner supports.
Thank you, Heidi. And those are our two budget transfers. Happy to answer any questions on them.
See, I don't see any.
Yeah.
Right?
If there's no questions, I, I would move to for the school committee to approve the transfers as presented.
Second.
Here is the second. That we can have a vote.
Pam Nurse Sacton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbston Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Coming from Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Mosto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes, that was unanimously approved.
Okay, the next item is an award of a contract cleaning company for the school. The, the staff put together a review committee to look at RFPs. And under state law, the first thing you have to do is, is basically determine if, if, if the, if the proposal basically is highly advantageous, advantageous, or not advantageous. So the committee did walk through that. I guess I'll let Michelle walk through the results of this. If she's ready. Not Nikki?
Yeah, I think Michelle.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't get, yeah, I couldn't get my mute off. So, yeah, just as Steve had explained, we had a committee put together. We went through the proposals. We received four proposals. One of them was deemed unacceptable. We had one that was deemed advantageous, and then we had two that were highly advantageous. Again, we went out for an RFP, so for the district, that's the most beneficial when doing these contracts with people, because we have the opportunity to review the company as a whole and not just the bottom line price. Because we get to do that, we take the time to really go through each of the proposals. The two proposals that came out as highly advantageous, which enabled us to move them forward to the price evaluation, was SJ Services and then our incumbent company, which is MP Building Services. At this point, the committee calls references. We called not only the references that they provided, but we also called other references of companies that they had previously done business with. We got great reviews on them, so then it moves to the price proposal stage, and SJ Services, as you can see, was our lowest bidder. And so our recommendation is to move forward with signing a contract with SJ Services.
Does anyone have any questions for Steve, Nikki, Michelle about this cleaning contract? Maggie has a question.
How does the price compare to what we've been paying in prior years?
So it is a little bit higher than what actually we had budgeted for next year. But Nikki and I have worked through that already. We kind of have an idea. I think it was about from our budget, the budgeted amount, it was about, I think, ten thousand, Nikki? About ten thousand, fifteen to ten thousand. Or ten to fifteen thousand, actually. I can't remember the exact number off my head, but I mean, that's, and that's generally, when we budgeted, we budgeted a little bit of an increase from last, or this current year. So I think it's about twenty thousand dollars more than what we were paying this year.
But it, it wouldn't have mattered if you'd gone with the incumbent anyway, the price would have gone.
Correct. The, the both, both estimates were higher, but not significantly higher that it wasn't something that we could handle within our budgeted amounts.
I mean, everything is more expensive, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. How everything is. No, that's all great. Thank you. And this group, this group does other schools in the area that.
Yes, we, that's the most, most of their references were other school districts that were similar to us. Yeah.
Any further questions? I'm, I'm not absolutely certain. I'm seeing everybody's face. I think I do. I think I see no further questions. We could take a motion to award the cleaning services contract to SJ Services for a one-year period beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in the amount of seven hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars. The option for up to two additional one-year renewals for a maximum of three-year, total of three years.
Nikki or Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's seven eighty-two is for, for the full contract, not just one year, right?
That's for all three years.
Yeah.
Oh.
So if Alice is making a motion for one year, we need that broken out as to what the FY twenty-six.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion should be for a one-year period beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with the option for up to two additional one-year renewals for a maximum total of three years.
But the total price is seven eighty-two, nine seventy-four, right?
Yeah, for the three.
For the three years.
For the three years.
Is it like three even installments, or is there any upfront larger fee this year with different fees in other years?
I think there's an inflationary increase over the years two and three.
Yep.
Can the motion be kind of, we're awarding the contract they presented, which has in it the pricing information. So can we make the motion to award the contract for, you know, the one year with the option for two years without including the price amount?
Yeah.
I think that is, if you look at the updated agenda, I think the language is to approve the cleaning services contract for a one-year period beginning July one, ending June thirtieth, with the option for up to two additional one-year renewals for a maximum of three years. That way, it aligns with whatever is in the contract, which is in your backup packet.
Okay. So can I try a motion? Going to just repeat it, but I move to approve the cleaning services contract. Oops, shoot, I don't have the name of the company.
SJ Services.
Services.
I move to approve the cleaning services contract for SJ Services for a one-year period beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with the option for up to two additional one-year renewals for a maximum of three years.
Second.
Okay, any comments? There don't appear to be any. So we can take a vote.
So we can take a vote.
Ham Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague.
Did we get a second?
Yes.
We did get a second. Okay, go ahead.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbeson Bolton, yes.
Eve will do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice Lucasto, yes. Okay, we are done with that.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you for working on that. Subcommittee reports, capital planning, um, we do not have anything to report at the moment. We'll be meeting soon. The policy subcommittee, we have um, the same policy that we looked at last time. DJE, this is procurement requirements. This is the second reading. There have been no edits sent to me. Did uh, anyone else receive any edits? No.
Alice.
Yeah.
Uh, when, when the finance committee reviewed this, um, Jeff uh, was concerned about in um. In the fourth sentence of the draft, the phrase position slash title could be mis- um. Mis- uh, misinterpreted. So it might be better and I'm trying to get the whole language to just pick position as opposed to position slash title. I'm trying to find it, sorry.
Is it the one that says only upon approval from the superintendent, the CPO of the school district has the authority to de- to delegate his or her procurement powers and duties to a position slash title?
That's it, that's it, yeah.
If, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that came directly from the office of the inspector general. Is that correct, Nikki?
So that was the wording, um, but Jeff felt as though the like slash. Um, may, make it, may make it appear as though Minuteman may have missed something. So maybe we should either just remove the slash and write or and or. Or just pick position. I think position and title are pretty much the same um, thing. And I think just the way he was reading it, he didn't want someone to misinterpret that Minuteman um, didn't catch that.
Okay. Uh, what do you think? Which word?
So as if it were um, something like we didn't fill in, like a position should be.
Uh, like a placeholder, yeah.
That makes sense.
So what if we just say? Or title, position or title with a Massachusetts.
I think that makes sense. Position or title.
All right, so with that amendment, we could um, adopt DJE for second reading. Do, does anyone make a, want to make a motion to uh, adopt DJE for second reading with that amendment in the fourth line?
So move. Second.
We have a second permission to do. Okay. You can have a vote. Or. For further discussion, any further discussion? No, um, I will have a vote.
Ham Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbeson Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice Lucasto, yes. And I'm just making a note that we amended it. Okay, so uh, nine C um, is the superintendent evaluation subcommittee with Ms. Norris.
Okay. H, um, so what I wanted to do is just review the process. And then talk a little bit about the document that's in the packet. That's a compilation of. The uh, individual school committee evaluations. And I want to first just. Do a little thank you to the committee, Maggie, uh, Sharon and um, Charlene. And a special shout out to Maggie for compiling all the individual data from um, all the school committee members. So just as a little review, here's what was in the um. Evaluation document. So first of all, and I'll go over this quickly, the evaluation is based on the goals that were developed by the superintendent. Approved by the school committee. And for each goal, the eval- the document included key. Key actions, evidence and additional information to support the goals. Each school committee member then evaluated the superintendent on progress towards each goal. And all the rankings that school committee members gave on all three of the goals. What fell into the categories of significant progress, uh, met the goal and exceeded the goal. And there's lots of comments there to um, support those rankings and, you know, really to call out a lot of the. Just incredible terrific work that our superintendent has done over the past year. In addition, the school committee members evaluated the superintendent on each one of the four professional standards. And all school committee members ranked the superintendent as either proficient or exemplary. On all four of those standards. And again, um, added lots of comments talking about, you know, the. You know, tremendous skills that Heidi has brought to this position. I, I just wanted to call out a few comments that were. Representative of many of the comments that were in the document. One would never guess that Superintendent Driscoll is completing the first year of her superintendency. She leads like one who has been at this for decades and that sentiment was repeated throughout. Minuteman is extraordinarily fortunate to have Superintendent Driscoll at the helm as we move forward. Reviewing Superintendent Driscoll's reflections on the year, it is clear that we are very fortunate to have Superintendent Driscoll at the helm. She set forth with a strong and comprehensive data-driven plan, listened carefully to all members of the community. And offered consistently powerful insights and strategies for moving ahead across all areas of the district. And perhaps my favorite comment here. The future of Minuteman, to quote an old song from the nineteen eighties, is so bright that I have to wear shades. Under the superintendent's leadership. So I wanna commend Heidi on a very successful first year. I want to give school committee members who would like to add some comments and then give Heidi an opportunity to comment.
Heidi, I'll go. Um, I just think that your um. Your ability to not just see a problem, but try to solve the problem. Um, I specifically think about when we met early on and you were notified that you were in the superintendent's. Training program, but there wasn't one for vocational superintendents. And so you didn't just go, oh, well, that's a bummer that there isn't one for. Vocational, but now you've worked towards creating one for vocational. So I think that that's really um. Indicative of just kind of how you've led this whole year of that if you see a problem, you move forward with how to solve that problem. And it's been um, pretty impressive to watch the various ways in which you've seen problems and tried to tackle them.
Thank you, Sharon.
Alice.
I'm one of the people who feels very lucky that we have uh, Superintendent Driscoll for Minuteman um. And uh, I'll just leave it at that. I was very wordy in my evaluation, so I'll be short now.
Other comments from school committee members? Heidi?
I would love to say something. Um, I read every single word um, that you sent in that um, draft because it hasn't been approved yet. I, uh, we don't get to spend a ton of time as a whole together. It was just absolutely wonderful to see. How all of you know about Minuteman and what happens at Minuteman, and I appreciate that tremendously. I do also appreciate, I saw some recommendations in there, which I of course will take to heart and I will um, make sure that in my future um. Goals, they're reflected. Um, and uh, I am. I am absolutely so happy I came. Um, our staff is incredible. Our leadership team has been wonderful and I feel like. The, the finding problems and trying to solve them, that's my best and my worst quality. Because there's always something. Um, but our um, our team really wants to make. The future of Minuteman happen. And um, it's really exciting to be here and I, I hope that. With Paul and I um, here this year and us uh. Fi- finally not having any interim positions, I hope that this is um, the age of consistency. And I feel very fortunate to work with all of you. Um, I have worked with many school committees. And to echo Steve's sentiments, you all work so well together. You're wonderful communicators, so respectful and professional to each other and to me. It's been an absolute pleasure and um. The work that we've had to do outside of the building, um, I do want to call out Alice has been to. Driving to Everett to uh, Board of Education meetings and um, Sarah was there yesterday. I mean, there's just. There's so mu- much of that, that energy and passion for what we do um, as a regional vocational school district and. I feel fortunate for, for working with all of you, so thank you.
Okay, um.
Oh, I have one more shout out. I was looking at all my little boxes and Charlene was hidden there. If you don't know, Charlene um, did attend. The superintendent's school committee joint conference with me. Literally, we had to stay there for several days. And Charlene has been very, very active when it comes to the vocational coalition and connecting with. Other school committee members in other districts, which again is just uh. You, everybody's doing their piece, but those are some things that have just been above and beyond. So, thank you.
Do we need to vote to approve this, Pam?
Yes, um. I was, hold on, I just was reading, we do need to. We do need to vote to approve and then we will um, provide Heidi with a final version.
Should we take a vote?
Could I make a motion that we um, approve the superintendent evaluation as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a second and we can take a vote.
Ham Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbeson Bolton, yes.
People do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice Lucasto, yes. Thank you, Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee and Superintendent.
That's great. So we have finished with the agenda with the exception of the executive session. So um, for those of you don't know, we are required by the open meeting law to read. The vote to enter into executive session exactly as written. So we need to have a motion to enter into executive session and not to return to open session. To include Julia Pasenna in the meeting. For the following reason, pursuant to MGL chapters thirty A, section twenty-one A two, for the purpose of discussing strategy. As it relates to contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent Director Driscoll. And um. Now we can have a motion for that.
Maggie, so moved.
And a second.
Second.
We have a second. So we can take a vote. It must be um. Known also that we have to repeat, when we get into executive session, we have to repeat the exact same language in the executive session. So. We will now take a vote to enter executive session and thank you, everybody. This has been a terrific, terrific year. Go ahead.
Ham Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Linda Herbeson Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice Lucasto, yes. We have the link sent to us earlier by Julia. We'll see you there.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.